And I just want to say that we noticed an issue with the notice that we issued to discuss the Silverado project this evening. We put a paper notice out in the hall. We've, we blasted it out on social media, too, to let everyone know that we're not going to be able to discuss that item this evening. And I'm very sorry. I know this, this looks bad. I just want to ensure the public it's not in any way trying to delay the project at all. We certainly hope it'll come back first weekend, more than likely in February. So Steve, did you want to add anything to that?
No.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll get it corrected and, and we'll bring it back and let everyone know when it will be on the agenda again. So please stay tuned for that and my apologies. Okay, let's go ahead and have our deputy clerk take the roll.
Councilmember DeWilles.
Here.
Councilmember Duvernay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Carratt.
Present.
Councilmember Weldon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nary.
Here.
And Merrillinsky.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And please stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. And council members, do we have anything this evening? No? Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of items here. The airport, Cottonwood Airport Commission meeting on Wednesday, January 4th has been canceled until we go ahead and assign some, a couple of commissioners that are vacant. You can also dispose of your Christmas tree free of charge at the city's reclamation water fill station adjacent to the public works yard at 1490 West Mingus Avenue. The drop off site is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All lights and decorations must be removed off the trees before they are dropped off. Trees will be accepted until January 31st. And lastly, the rec received their new kitty slide today. Staff will be working on setting it up and insulation date is, is coming in the next week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is call to the public. This portion of the agenda set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially illicit on the agenda. Do we have any folks here this evening that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the floor then. Move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 20th, '22. If there's no corrections, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Weldon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. And we roll into unfinished business. There's just one item this evening. It's ordinance number 726, a zone change for a 2.8 acre parcel of land located at 597 East State Route 89A from I-2 heavy industrial to C-2 heavy commercial. And this is the second and final reading.
Yes, Mayor. This has been brought back, was previously presented, and we have gotten not, no comments on this particular item. So we're ready to go.
All right. Any other comments, questions from council? All right. I'll go ahead and motion then to approve ordinance number 726.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Duvernay.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nary.
Yes.
And Merrillinsky.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, please read ordinance number 726 by title only.
Ordinance number 726, an ordinance of the Marin City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, rezoning a portion of Yavapai County, APN 406-06-303E from the present zoning of I-2 heavy industrial to C-2 heavy commercial.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is our monthly financial report for August of '22. Council, do you have any questions on this? No? Okay. All right, let's go into consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. We have four items this evening. First up is modification of agreement with the United States Bureau of Reclamation for the study of direct potable reuse. Item two is cooperative use with the City of Peoria's job order contract with Schofield Civil Construction for early-stage construction services for the new lift station number two. Item three is purchase of a backup power generators from Empire Power Systems for the Mingus wastewater treatment plant and lift station number five. And last is resolution number 3156, reappointing Joyce Oswald to the city's personnel board. Is there an item that a council member or a citizen would like to have pulled? All right, I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Mayor, may the motion council, excuse me, Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the consent agenda is approved. And let's get our deputy clerk to read resolution number 3156, please, by title only.
Resolution number 3156, a resolution of the Marin City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Joyce Oswald, a member of the city's personnel board, and establishing her term of office.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is new business. And the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Again, and just because I noticed we had a few folks step in recently, we're not going to be discussing the Silverado development this evening that we noticed an issue with the notice that we sent out. So we're going to postpone that and get it back on the agenda, more than likely the first meeting in February. So if you're here for that, you don't need to stick around, but of course, you're more than welcome to. So first up under new business is interview of applicants for the airport commission. We have quite a few.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilber, HR Director. We currently have two full-term seats available on the airport commission due to some expiring terms. So we have gone through the process, meaning we have advertised the openings. We received six applications before the posted deadline for this position. And then the applications were reviewed by the applicant review committee already. So now we're at the point in our process where council gets to interview the applicants. At the conclusion of the interviews tonight, the scores will be sent back to myself. They will be added to our applicant review committee's scores and a proposed, the proposed applicants to be brought forward to be appointed to the board will be brought back at a later meeting. So four out of the five airport commission members must be tenants or leases of the airport or have working knowledge of aviation matters. Of the four, one must be a city resident. Right now, we have three current members that are all tenants and leases of the airport or have aviation experience, and two of the three reside within the city. So after tonight, council may appoint one member who resides within the city but does not need to have a working knowledge of aviation matters. And then the other seat must be appointed with one member who is a tenant of the airport or has working knowledge of aviation matters. So before I bring that back to you next time, I will make sure that, that those criteria are met by the proposed applicants. So with that, all six applicants had confirmed that they could be here tonight, and we are ready for council to interview.
Okay, great. I want to thank all the applicants for submitting your application. I don't remember a time when we've had so many applicants for, for a commission. And we do have other commissions. So if you're not appointed to this specific one, and you still want to serve the city of Cottonwood, I'd, I'd highly recommend you, you consider serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Historic Preservation Commission. So I'm going to just do these, I believe, in alphabetical order. So we're going to start off with Mr. Duff, Rick Duff. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You're the lucky one that gets to go first, but they're really simple questions.
Okay.
And the guy that gets to go last is going to have heard this an awful whole lot. They're going to be the same questions for each applicant. But again, really appreciate you being here this evening.
Yep, my pleasure.
All right. So Mr. Duff, first up, please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city. Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city.
You know, one of the things that I think I bring to the table, other than obvious age, maybe, and, and I, just to give you a little background, I, I'm a newly minted pilot and tenant. I, I received my certificate at the age of 70 last year. So I bring no baggage and no long-term history. What I do bring is maybe some experience and life experience. What I do bring, though, for sure, is business experience. I was associated with, I was COO and executive vice president of a company in Peoria, Arizona. We did about $50 million a year. Our clients were government, universities, utilities, most notably nuclear power utilities. And so I have, I think, a balanced view of a little bit of business. And I also live three blocks from the airport. So I, you know, I, I bring a little of that to the party, too. Things that bother maybe some neighbors would, would obviously, I'd be among the mix. On the other hand, I bring a business background that I think is going to be very, very helpful in the very near future. There's a lot of things that I, I see on the planning, and I've read the plan. There's a lot of construction-type things, which I, that is my background. There's a lot of things that will benefit and be of concern to the tenants, current and future. So those are the things. I think common sense is going to play a big role. I think, you know, compromise is, is always something to look at in these matters. The balance of public, the tenants, the people around, the businesses. Safety is absolutely my number one goal in, in anything that I do. And safety at the airport is absolutely critical. And there's a lot of things that will affect safety in the very, very, very near future. Some of the things that we're looking at right now are things that will affect that dramatically. So any questions? That's my spiel.
No, that's good. I think you, you answered a lot of, of the second question as well, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it anyway. It's what expertise would you bring to the commission to assist the commission in providing advice and recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
I think, I think the business background. I was also, for several years, a member of the Arizona, or the, the Yavapai County Workforce Development Board, working with Arizona at Work and NACOG. My, I have a desire to serve the community, and I have a desire, and I have some personal things that I'm looking, I am a tenant. So there are things that I will be looking at personally, too. But there has to be a business decision made in a lot of this with a good balance.
Okay. All right. And last question, sir, is based on your understanding of the current airport commission, what does the commission do well and what can be improved on?
You know, I haven't been there that long to, to give a long, drawn-out, I think the commission has done a good job so far, in my opinion. It's a nice airport. In my brief travels around, I can tell you that, that we have a great little airport. There's not much that I would change in terms of, you know, how it looks. I don't think we need 747s landing here or anything like that. But on the other hand, you know, we want to do what's best for, for the airport. And I think the airport will, the more it's developed, the more money that it will bring in, and that's a benefit to the public, to the community, and to the airport. I, I have no notions, one way or the other, on any commission members at all, or that the commission has done. I, I think they've done a fine job so far.
Okay, great. Well, that's it. That was easy, right?
Well, thanks.
Yeah. Thanks for your application. We do appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're going to call forward Mr. Looney, Mike Looney. Are you here this evening? Evening. Well, sir, we have the exact same questions for you as well. But I'll read them anyways, in case you didn't write them down, right? First up, please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city.
I, I think in two ways. One is through marketing. So there's, there's some opportunity to leverage the benefits that the city and the community already provide in terms of wineries and making the city a destination. Pilots are hugely mobile. Obviously, we can attract people from California all over the West to Cottonwood, just on the basis of the amenities that we already have in the community. And a lot of that is growing. We just need to market that and get it out in front of the public. In the past, I've actually been a published author for magazines, periodicals. My, my email address, fly and bike, comes from some of the articles that I've written, flying around Southern Utah in rental aircraft and mountain biking in places like Canyon, Lansing, Needles District. And I, in the process of, of writing those articles, it, it basically has promoted some of those places and some of those activities. So that's kind of the main push that I believe that we can use to strategically improve the facilities.
Okay, great. Thank you. And second question is, what expertise would you bring to the commission to assist the commission in providing advice and recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
So I am not a newly minted private pilot. I, I got my license close to 40 years ago in Flagstaff, and had flown into most of the northern Arizona airports, even Baghdad and some of the smaller ones. My expertise is as a private pilot, and not only that, but a member of the Arizona Pilot Association, I'm also a rated hang glider pilot. So I'm familiar with the concerns of our community. Although they don't relate to the airport specifically, they do integrate with airport traffic. And I, and I believe that they do have interest in the community.
Great. And last question, sir, is based on your understanding of the current airport commission, what does the commission do well and what can be improved on?
I, I think what the commission does well, and Jeff Tripp, and, and the organization is, is to basically allay some of the concerns that the community has about the airport, airport noise, every riddled traffic, other things like that. I don't have a lot of depth of experience. We just moved here about a year and a half ago. Today's actually my second day as a retired member of the community. I'm now in the full employ of my wife. But I, I think that in the meetings that I've attended and what I've read of the minutes, that the organization has done well in, in terms of promoting the resource, allaying some of the concerns around the community about pilots, safety, things like that, and, and just doing a good job with, with marketing.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Mona, you're up next, sir.
Good evening to you.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
So same three questions. First one is, please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city.
Okay. A lot of ways. The marketing that we've been doing and will continue to do. I've been working at the airport, on the airport commission for quite some time. I'm one of the original members of the airport commission, the last one, as a matter of fact.
That's right.
Last one standing. And I've learned a great deal in the years that I've been on the commission about airports, about the legalities, the engineering involved, the maintenance upkeep, and hopefully how to keep a friendly, inviting airport so we can attract as many folks from outside as we can. We've got a lot of resources here that need to be continually introduced to people.
Okay. Second question, sir, is what expertise would you bring to the commission to assist the commission in providing advice and recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
I am a private pilot. I've been a pilot for quite some time. Own my own aircraft that's based at Cottonwood. So I, I have a vested interest in what's going on at the airport. And over the years, as I mentioned, I have learned a great deal about how an airport does operate and should operate. And I would like to continue to serve the citizens of Cottonwood and the users of Cottonwood Airport with that knowledge and experience.
Great. And last question is, based on your understanding of the current airport commission, what does the commission do well and what can be improved on?
I think we do a lot of things very well. We have a good group that work together. We work well with our airport manager, Jeff Tripp. And we have a common interest in, of course, in safety at the airport. That's number one. And two, keeping it a very attractive, very easy to access and operate out of airport. Cottonwood Municipal Airport is truly a gem. And it, I would like to see it stay that way. And I'm sure there's some things that as a commission, we could have done better. Monday morning quarterbacking is always, what can I say? But we try and try very hard and work hard at it.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it for the questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mosse, Raymond Mosse, you're up next. Good evening.
Thanks for being here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard all your questions. I guess the first one would be about economic development. Well, first, I'd like to recognize that earlier today, the Arizona, Cottonwood Airport was recognized as Arizona Airport of the Year, which is really remarkable, considering it's one of 67 public airports in, in its, and most, sorry, a little nervous. The noise abatement program is what set the Cottonwood Airport apart, which is why it was recognized as the Airport of the Year for, for Arizona, which I think is very commendable. I saw that earlier today. As far as economic development, as a former senator, I was a Nebraska state senator, which economic development is huge. In Nebraska, we have major ConAgra, UP, and all them. And that was my big platform, because I know for economic development, you need, you need jobs, you need people. We're experiencing that round currently, the Vice President of Verde Valley Sanctuary, the domestic bonds organization. I was the president of it during COVID, when we entered COVID. So we navigated a lot of things with that, and growing. But most importantly, that I'm becoming aware of, I think, as a commission, you're more of a watch person. And as we're coming into this new year, there's a lot of things that I think people, commissions need to be watching for, fuel costs. We're talking, two-thirds of economists are saying we're going to go into a global recession. These are things that are going to affect the, the airport. The Eurasia Group puts out their, their yearly risk. One of them is the new, possibly new COVIDs that could come out. And I've seen before that shuts down the airports. Things that you need to be aware of when you're serving on a commission as a watch person of what's coming out with economics and fuel costs. And, but most importantly, it all comes together at some point. Like I said, economic development, because you don't grow without money. And in this economy right now, you gotta, you gotta retain people. You gotta do what it takes to keep the people, because nobody wants to really work a lot right now, so.
Okay. All right. Second question is, what expertise would you bring to the commission to assist the commission in providing advice and recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
As a state senator, I was appointed the Offutt Air Force Base Advisory Council. Offutt Air Force Base is one of the largest bases in the United States. That's where President Bush landed on 9/11. I served on that advisory council. And in that role, you're, you're pretty much kind of like an ambassador. I think what I bring to the table a lot is, what makes me a successful senator was working with public and, and politics. I find that serving on the Verde Valley Sanctuary Board. We do a lot with different agencies and, and, for example, being here with y'all today, and work a lot with nonprofit alliances and things like that. But it's the, the ability to, you see that going on in Congress right now, bring people together. Our board is very unique. We have people from all, all facets that serve on our board. But it boils down to the mission, you know? We get, mission comes first. It doesn't matter personalities, whatever. The mission comes first. And that's, as an effective commission, mission always comes first. Personalities go side by side. So I bring that to the table, the compromise aspect. And we vote, when we vote in the sanctuary, vote 100%. We don't vote unless it's 100% vote. That's the, the type of bond I think is important in an organization, because it's, it shows solidarity.
Okay, great. All right. And last question is, based on your understanding of the current airport commission, what does the commission do well and what can be improved on?
I think, obviously, they do well, because it wouldn't have been named the Arizona Airport of the Year for 2022. The noise abatement is really huge, especially, I live just a few blocks away from the airport, so I'm right in the flight path. It's like amazing the traffic. It amazes me how much that airport's growing. The, the recent master plan said what, 64 airplanes right there? And by 2039, they want like 84 airplanes. So there's a lot of growth projected, but there's a lot of economy coming on, too. So what they do well is they're being recognized for that. And what's important is because it's based upon trust, which is one of the big parts when, when you're given that award, is trust. The management speaks well. And so I know they do that well. Honestly, I don't know what they don't. I know here, coming up pretty soon, they're going to do, because they got the new master plan coming out. And so they're going to do a public awareness for the master plan. I reviewed the master plan and, tangent real quick, I noticed, you're talking about economic development, that I was surprised that the airport made almost $700,000 in revenue last year, in last year's budget. When I was looking at the budget, I was like, wow. So there is areas to, to grow in with the land leased and things like that. And we do that with the sanctuary a lot, to be self-sufficient. Go back to, go back. Probably more awareness. That's kind of the biggest thing that we struggle, awareness, that people, you see the planes come by. One of my neighbors, he's, he's lived here his whole life. His family's been here his whole life. And I'm like, what happened to the airshow? Well, COVID took a lot of stuff away. And everybody loves an airshow. Airshows bring people together. I think things like that. I know, when I served in the military and then on the base advisory council, airshows are awesome. Things like that create awareness and positive images. But she's even recognition for the 2022 Airport of the Year for Arizona is just tremendous. Speaks for itself.
Yeah, that was, that's great. That's news to me. So thanks for sharing.
I like, I like to try and show up as prepared as possible. I'm like, I was amazed at how much stuff I was reading. I was like, man, there's a lot of stuff in, with, with airports. I'm familiar with airports, but a lot more than you realize that goes on. So thank you for your time.
We had an airshow once, too, but things didn't end so well. So a little, little shy about starting up a new one. It makes our attorney nervous, but.
A liability.
Yeah, a little bit. But thank you so much for your application, being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, take care. All right. And then next we have Mr. Wade, Bill Wade. Are you here this evening? There you are. Thank you again for your application, for being here this evening.
Thank you for the invite.
All right, I'm going to repeat all the questions, okay? You ready?
Sure.
All right. First up is, please tell us how you would assist the commission in furthering the city's strategic plan to have the airport be an economic driver for the city.
That actually is a pretty difficult question, because there are kind of two elements to economic development with an airport. One of them is developing the capabilities to bring in companies that have aircraft that need to have hangers for aircraft. And we haven't done a lot in that area. We have about 35. We have about 35 aircraft that are looking for a hangar, and I'm sure many of those are people out of town that would probably bring business or come up here if they had a place to put an aircraft. And so that, that is one of the major problems, is it's going to require some funding, and we don't have really those kinds of capabilities right now. The other one is more simple, and that is to cater to businesspeople that fly up on a regular basis, to do work here. And we have small little nuances that, that cause problems. For example, we don't have any rental cars. And so if I'm living in Phoenix and I'm a businessperson, I'm going to fly up and try to do business at Cottonwood, I'm going to land in Sedona, I'll land in Sedona and rent a car and drive over here. So you have a bunch of those little items like that, that also bleed over into the whole economic development issue. So I think that we need to really kind of take care of those boutique-type pilots that come up here and do business on a regular basis, but we also need to embark on some way that a company could come in here and build a good-sized hangar and bring in a nice-sized aircraft and do business. And if they can't do that, many companies are not going to come here. And so economic development is going to require that.
Okay, good. And second question is, what expertise would you bring to the Commission to assist the Commission in providing advice and recommendations on airport-related matters to this council?
I hate to say it, but I've been a pilot for 50 years. I did serve on the Flagstaff Airport Commission years ago. I have, I fly on a regular basis for business, leaving next week, for example, an aircraft that I own, going to New Mexico to do some work. And I think I have the ability to see what is needed and how we need to work with the airport manager in trying to further the development of the airport.
And last question, sir, is, based on your understanding of the current Airport Commission, what does the Commission do well and what can be improved on?
I think the Commission does well in addressing those issues that come up quite often with noise abatement. I think that the manager of the airport and the Commission has addressed that really quite well, and I think in the last six months or so, you've seen less of a problem as far as noise is concerned, and I think that's been what the Commission has done quite well. We also, as pilots on the Commission, we try to give guidance to the airport manager and try to debate with him different issues that come up that, that he has to address, and we try to provide assistance with that. And I have a lot of experience in, in aircraft and flying and the problems with moving from point A to B as far as the airport's concerned, so I think I add to that, that factor. The difficulties, of course, is that we, we really don't have a clear objective on how we're going to do economic development, how we're going to expand that. We put out a lot of fires on noise abatement, we tried to do airport work with the runway and repair and, and parking and those kind of issues, but we really are limited, I think, as a Commission in moving us to the next generation on what we're going to do to improve the airport from an economic development standpoint.
Okay. All right. Well, that's it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, to all the six applicants, I really just want to say we appreciate you submitting your application. We couldn't get all the things done, we want to get done in our community without volunteers like you. It is a volunteer position, just to be, just to be clear on that, so appreciate it very much. Sir, did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm one of the applicants, and I think, John Wade, I hope you have it there.
I'm so sorry.
Well, that's okay.
I assumed Wade was the last one, because we're the W's, and we're going alphabetically, and I'm glad you raised your hand.
Well, thank you. Let me, let me answer your first question first, and I am familiar with that. First of all, let me, let's get to know each other a little bit. I'm a retired deputy district attorney and assistant United States Attorney. I'm one of those out of Cottonwood applicants, and I live over in VOC. I've had my aircraft here, actually have two here now, but for about seven years, seven or eight years. I'm over there at Hangar Nine. I regularly fly out of here, and I get to the meetings on Saturday morning, where there are a good many pilots show up, that some of which fly and some of which talk more about flying than they actually do it. I'm also a member of AOPA, Aircraft Pilots Association, EAA, and of course, Soaring Society of America for many years. I'm a, you know, one of those people that have been flying for 50 years of somewhat of importance. I'm an old Navy mechanic and aircrewman from the Vietnam War years. After that, as I can, just told you, I did something different for many years, but I still fly. Now, let's, let's address the economic things that you're concerned about, and I'm worried about it too. If there's no airport, if it's closed, if you folks can't justify having the money spent on that airport, we're in real trouble. And let me be a little bit candid here. I think it's a great airport, I love being there, but you, as you know, the jump operation closed up, there was a potential for a glider operation, which left after a few weeks. The helicopter operation is gone. We have no FBO, that's called a fixed base operation. We have no mechanic services. We don't have jet fuel anymore, so if somebody wants to fuel a jet, they're not going to be able to do it. We still have 100 LL self-service. There are, there's a long waiting list for hangars, and I know it would be terribly expensive for you folks to build a bunch of them, but that could be revenue. What I think the Airport Commission could do, and maybe it's an insoluble problem, but there's got to be some way to get, you know, maintenance services, mechanic services, flight instruction, those kind of things in here, because that would generate revenue for you. And I don't know, you know, I don't have any real solution for this right now, but I'd sure like to try to work on it. Let me give you some idea why I might be able to work with this board, or Commission really. I've worked with a lot of them. Nonprofits, public service organizations of various kinds. Working with other people is always something that's a challenge, but I have a lot of experience doing it. So basically, that's the kind of things that I, I would offer to this board, and my concerns about this airport are things, the reasons I actually applied for this. So as, you know, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, right? So those are the things I'd really like to say to you tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. But the, one last question, though.
Sure.
You answered one and two, but, and you kind of answered three, but wanted to give you a chance anyway, that based on your understanding of the current Airport Commission, what do they do well and what can be improved on?
Oh, that's, you know, that's really hard. I think they really try hard to address the concerns, you can kind of tell what they've been looking at, airport new noise abatement. But I think the, the things that I brought up really need to be talked about more, whether those problems can be fixed. And just to list them again, airport services to attract paying customers here. And I can't imagine why somebody would move here in a situation where you can't, you can't get maintenance services, you couldn't get a flat tire fixed. I'd like to see some way to, for this Commission, and I don't know if they've worked on it or not, but I'd like to see some way to make this an attractive place for businesses, where somebody would say, you know, that big old building down there would be a great place for a flight school, or fixed base operation, or aircraft maintenance operation. They generate revenue, there's no question about that. So those are the kind of, that's kind of the way I would answer that question.
Okay, great. I'm sorry I passed you over, I didn't mean to, no offense.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and that really does wrap it up for our applicants. And again, thanks to each and every last one of you, even those of you in the W's for submitting your application, appreciate it very much. And like I said, we're going to make a decision at a future meeting, so we won't make a decision tonight. And if you don't make it this round, please reapply next round, and do consider some of the other volunteer opportunities that we have in the city, we'd love to have you as part of our team. All right, and council just set these aside for Ms. Wilber, we'll give them to you after the meeting. Great. Okay, moving on then, we have two items next, or item two and three, Resolutions Number 3155, approving a minor amendment to the City's general plan, changing land use designation for approximately 11.6 acres of land located on the west side of Silverado Drive. This item and the next item, we're not going to be able to discuss this evening, we put notices outside, we did a social media blast, we did everything we could at the last minute to let folks know that we're just not going to be able to discuss this this evening, it was just really an issue with, with the notice requirements, we want to cross our Ts and dot our Is, so we're going to bring this back, probably the first meeting in February is our hope, so we'll keep everyone posted, and I apologize if this inconveniences anyone. So we're going to table those two items and then move on to item four, which is an annual appointment of vice mayor. And this is something that we've done annually since I came on board as mayor. The only thing I want to make sure is that every council member that serves here feels like they have the opportunity to step into the vice mayor role. Vice Mayor Naren's done an excellent job, I don't give her too many opportunities to step in for me, but when I, when I need her to, she, she does, she steps in, she does a great job. The role of the vice mayor for our new council members really is just, is just to chair the meeting when I'm not available, I don't miss too many meetings. And then also to, to serve in my place should I die in a mountain biking accident while on vacation. So that's really the more critical role of the vice mayor. But, but anyway, I do, I do want to just open it up to, for council discussion, if there's anybody who's itching to step into that role, please speak now, if there's anyone that, you know, wants to throw your support behind our current vice mayor for another year, that's, that's okay too, I just want to give everyone equal opportunity to step up. What's so funny over there?
Well, as long as I can not cough and speak, so sorry about that, just so everybody knows, I am not sick, I'm having some asthma issues that causes me to cough that way from time to time, so very sorry about that. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as a vice mayor for this past year, but in keeping with what we've been doing and passing it along for everybody to have an opportunity, I have spoken to a few council members, and I believe that the person that I'm, I would like to see in this position next is going to do an excellent job. So if there's no other council input, I will make a motion.
Sure, I'm curious who you're.
Okay. I move to appoint Debbie Wildin to serve as the vice mayor of the city effective January 4th, 2023. Second.
Great, we have a motion by the vice mayor and a second by council member Henry, I didn't think you wanted it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Can I make a third?
No. Not even as vice mayor, can you make a third?
Council member DeWelles?
Yes.
Council member Duvernay?
Yes.
Council member Karat?
Yes.
Council member Wildin?
Uh, yes.
Council member Henry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naren?
Yes.
And Mayor Alinsky?
Yes. Great, well, congratulations to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and thanks to you for serving, I really, it's been a great year, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, next, here's the fun stuff, is annual appointment of council representatives to various organizations, committees, and boards related to intergovernmental, regional, and other matters. So in our packet is a list of all the committees that we've committed to over the years, this is sort of a rolling list, some, some things crop up that we want to serve on, some things fall off the list, but as you can see, these are what we're currently serving on, and we've lost a couple of council members, we have a new couple of council members coming on board, so if there's anything that a new council member would like to be a part of, now's your chance to, to arm wrestle, and if there's any council member that wants to step off and give somebody else an opportunity, again, now's your chance, so.
Well, I'd like to talk for a moment about the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, so I had been attending those meetings when they were having them pre-COVID, but they still have not announced the public meetings, and it's a couple of years later, so I don't know if the plan is to go back to the public meetings or not. If not, I have been attending the meetings of the, I can't remember, there's a big, huge acronym for this, but Verde Valley Coalition of Nonprofits, basically, that's a meeting on monthly basis, and they really appreciate having a council member, and so I would like to see that maybe replace the homeless coalition on this list, so that, you know, someday I'm not around to be on there, another council member could take that up, because that group really does appreciate having council input.
Okay, great.
I'm familiar with the nonprofit as well, I attended some of those, and that's an excellent idea.
So just so I'm clear, do you think that the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition should be struck from this list entirely, or just that you don't want to be the alternate for it?
Well, I don't know. Mr. Mayor, you're, you're on their board, I believe, so do you, do you happen to know if they're going to start those public meetings again?
You know what, I don't know, but I can bring it up. We're, we're working on our strategic plan for a few different things at the moment, so we, I can bring it up with them and see if that's going to be part of the plan going forward, I think it was good to have the, the meetings. I signed up for another year to be on the board, so I'm fine serving and from time to time filling in the, the council if there's anything that comes up that's, that's pertinent. But, you know, and I think future councils can decide too, if they want, if it's something they want to be a part of, but I'm, I'm fine striking it from the list if that seems to please council.
I, I think it's important to have active, you know, participation when we sign up for these, so I think that now council member Naren's point is valid, if they aren't actively meeting, it might be good to have representation at another organization and then address in the future moving forward if we do need to appoint somebody back on, knowing that you do attend.
Sure.
The, the regular meetings anyway.
Okay, so what I'll do then, I'll just, I'll continue to attend as a board member, if they go back to the meetings that are open to the public, I'll bring it back up to council, we can discuss at the end of the year if we want to get that back on the list. Okay, great.
When do they meet?
We meet once a month.
Most of them do?
You know, no, some meet quarterly, I would say some meet just as needed, and some meet monthly, but I would say the majority are quarterly. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong on.
Mayor, you're, you're correct, we've got a number of these, such as the Cottonwood Personnel Board, the Alternate Pension Board, and the Cottonwood Area Transit TAC Committee, that one ends, does every quarter. So they, they all have different, not all of them, but they, they have different dates, and some do meet quarterly, some as needed, and then some monthly.
Well, just to start or carry on here, I'm fine serving on everything that I currently serve on as an alternate and the, and the primary, unless somebody else wants to step into any of them, I serve on NAMWA, which I don't offer much, Whitmer's our, our main guy on that, so I don't, I'm happy to continue to sign in and act like I know what they're talking about, but Whitmer's really our, our brainchild on that one. But again, I'm fine serving on that, I don't think I've ever had to call the alternate. What we really need is to fill the NACOG, since we lost Matthews, I don't know if council member Karat, you want to step into his primary role on that, or if there's somebody else that wants to step into the NACOG?
I, I can do that.
Okay.
I haven't heard.
I haven't heard anything about any of our meetings yet, but.
NACOG is a quarterly, uh, meeting.
Do believe so.
Yeah. Okay, is there anybody that'd like to alter, be the alternate on that?
I'm, I'm fine with alternate on that. And I'm also fine with staying on the review committee.
Okay.
Likewise, um, I don't know if we're going in order. I'd like to stay on, um, both the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization and then also the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board. But if, if somebody else was really interested, like you said, we could arm wrestle.
Okay. Okay, and then, uh, so just to jump back to you, council member Wilden, um, the boards and commission application review, you're going to stick on that, but is there somebody that would like to be an alternate?
That's the review committee that we just did. I didn't fill out the applications. I get them beforehand and fill them out for anybody on a board.
Yeah, and that's, you meet on an as-needed basis? Right. Would you like to be the alternate on that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great.
I can do the personnel board.
You, I'm sorry, say it again.
Cottonwood Personnel Board. I think that.
Okay, and you would like to be on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to be an alternate for?
I can do the alternate.
You'll do the alternate, okay. And I hope somebody's taking notes because, okay. Because I'm losing it. I'm losing track. All right, but I want to jump back because council member Henry said she would still be on the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board. We don't have an alternate for that. Okay, great. So council member Duvernay will be an alternate for the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board. And then you, council member Henry said the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization. And then vice mayor, are you okay being the alternate still on that?
Yes, I can continue to do that.
It's good to be the alternate for council member Henry in case anyone hasn't picked up on that yet.
Yes, I have not had to attend a single one of those meetings yet.
She makes it easy. So what are we missing here then? We need the alternate pension board, is that right? I'm the alternate. What's the frequency of that?
That one meets just once a year.
I'm the, I'm the one for that one then. I could.
You're the, I think you're the fact, the de facto member for that one.
Say again?
You're the de facto member. You are on that board and the finance director too.
Yeah, I'm the alternate for that. Is there anybody that wants to step in as the primary? I'm going to find being the primary. I still want to steal any, anyone's fun.
Guess I'll take primary.
Hey, there you go. I'll, I'll remain then as alternate. That work? Great.
That works just fine, mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. And? The Public Safety Personnel Board? No. Oh, I'm sorry, you gotta push the button.
Sorry about that.
So, so we need an alternate then for the Cottonwood Personnel Board?
How often do they meet?
Oh, did you?
Yes, Steve said it would be the alternate.
I said that alternate.
Yes.
Sorry, okay.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I think the, the only one we're missing is the Cottonwood Area Transit, which I'm currently the main person on that, although I have yet to be invited to a meeting of that as well. But Doug House was the alternate, so we will need an alternate for that or somebody who wants to take the lead if anybody so desires.
Okay.
I can take the alternate on that one.
Fantastic. Fantastic, I think we've got it settled then.
Mayor, just a background on the Cottonwood Area Transit, Transit Advisory Committee. We lost our manager for some time and the replacement was moi. And I just didn't have time to take care of all of my responsibilities for that. Liso has, has just begun, uh, taking over and setting up, um, those particular meetings. So there will be meetings this upcoming year. Those are quarterly.
Okay, great. All right, well, that was, that was painless. Yeah, thank you. And thanks to our new council members for stepping up. Appreciate it very much. And that's, that's that. You've got all the notes, right? Clear as, clear as mud. Okay. All right, then I would motion to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, council member Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, council member Wilden seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.